First matter of business, if you have a cellphone, please place it on vibrate or turn it off in order not to interrupt the meeting. If you wish to speak in favor or opposition to petition, please sign in, state your name and address for the record. If you need to have any extended conversations, please have some decorum and move out into the hallway amongst yourselves. That being said, moving forward under continued business, ZB 2018-21 for variance, Megan House Foundation, 268 Mount Vernon Street and 5 Varnham Street, Section 6.1.10. The applicant is seeking a site plan review, special permit and variance approval at 268 Mount Vernon Street and 5 Varnham Street. The proposers to redevelop the site to construct an approximately 22,000 square foot industrial and retail building with the associate parking. The proposed project is located in light industrial manufacturing storage, allied zoning storage, and requires site plan review approval under Section 11.4 and special permit approval under Section 12.4 subsection A for retail use and LI district for the planning board and variance approval for the zoning board under Section 6.1.10 for parking setback from lot lines and minimum access drive with and other relief that is required of a zoning ordinance. Is the petitioner here this evening? I didn't get it.
I wasn't sure if someone would be here today, but this evening, but they've requested a continuance to September 10th, in which they'll begin their petition.
That being said, we have communications from DPD. Petitioner has requested a continuance to September 10th. We have a motion.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZB 2018-21 for continuance to September 10th.
Second?
I'll second the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Roll call, please.
Chairman Perrin?
Approved continuance, September 10th.
Member Peck?
Approved continuance.
Member Callahan?
Approved continuance to September 10th.
Member McCarthy?
Approved continuance to September 10th.
Member Brier?
Approved continuance.
Moving forward on the new business, ZB 2018-24 for variance, Einstein Realty Realty LLC, 102 Appleton Street, Section 6.1.4. The applicant is seeking special permit approval from the planning board and variance approval from the zoning board to redevelop an existing building to two commercial units and four apartments at 102 Appleton Street. The building is in the urban mixed district and needs special permit approved from the planning board under Section 6.1.6 subsection 6 to reduce the residential parking requirement and under Article 12, section 12.1. D for the four dwelling units, various approval from the zoning board under 6.1.4 for the off-street parking requirement and any other relief required on a lower zoning ordinance. Good evening, Consular.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is Attorney Steve Geary. I represent Einstein Realty in their petition here tonight for relief for variance for parking related to their project at 102 Appleton Street. With me here tonight is the project manager from CAC Architects, Christina McMahon. Also, the owners of the property and the principals, the Gao family, it's the mom and dad, Lana and Einstein, and their son Vince, they own several properties here in the city. And this is another property that they recently purchased on Appleton Street with the intent of turning this property into two, I'm sorry, four residential units, two, three two bedrooms and one one bedroom, as well as two commercial units on the lower floor. The one side would be a smaller coffee shop and the other side a restaurant. So, just as I get started, Mr. Chairman, I want Christina to set up the boards so you can see them in front of, that's convenient.
Certainly.
And just by way of background, Mr. Chairman, my client bought this property several months
ago, and shortly thereafter, they approached about their plans for the property. So, we met with various members of the planning department several times and spoke to them about getting some input from them as to their thoughts on the project, and everything was very positive. You might recognize the project from the picture, and I'm sure you've gone by it, but it's that double archway building on the lower end of Appleton Street. It used to be the Lowell House, I believe, several years ago, but it's been vacant for several years. It is in the historic district, so they are working with the Steve Stoll from the historic department. And just by way of procedural background, last Tuesday, we were before the planning board for the special permits to reduce the parking by 50%, which is allowed, and also to get the special permit for the residential dwellings. Both requests were allowed unanimously, they voted, and it was all set. They had nothing negative to say, and they were positive about every aspect of the project and about the Gao family willing to invest money in that section of the Appleton Street. So, they're looking forward to relief from this board so they can get started and go to the historic board. Just so you know, the requirement of parking would be a total of 24 spots, and because mixture of the residential and the commercial, but because of the 50% reduction that's allowed that was approved, we are seeking relief from 12 spots. Now, if you have gone up and down this area, you know that parts of Appleton Street have plenty of parking, plenty of meeded parking, so there's relief that they get on the commercial units in and of itself because of the meeded parking that they have in front. In addition to that, they have the parking garage, it's the early garage, it's within 1,500 feet, which is the mechanism that allows them to get the 50% relief. And on top of that, they have that small lot next to Tower, in between, I guess, Towers News and the juvenile court, where there's plenty of spots at night. So, it's a perfect spot for the restaurant, the coffee shop, and the four residential units. It fits right in with the master plan, the GM plan, the downtown plan, and every type of plan that has been associated with redeveloping this area. It's going to provide market rate housing, and it's going to provide restaurants and a coffee shop, something that the city is looking for in that area. So, it's going to have absolutely zero detriment on the surrounding area. It's going to enhance the surrounding area, and due to the size and the shape of this lot and the location in the downtown, it does meet the criteria that otherwise would result in hardship from my client. So, would be asking for relief from those 12 spots. So, to be clear, we have no parking whatsoever except the meeded parking that's in front, the parking from the early garage, and the parking lot in between the juvenile court right now and Towers News. You also know that the juvenile court will be closing soon and moving over to the main courthouse that's under construction now, so that's going to relieve a lot of parking in that area. Again, there's no issue with parking in that area. I think the problem is there's parking in that area, meaning there's not enough business there. So, there is plenty of parking right now. It's not going to be any kind of traffic issue, safety issue, parking issue, or any kind of issue related to the city. This project is nothing but a mechanism to enhance that area of Appleton Street, and respectfully request that you approve the variance for parking. Happy to answer any questions. The architect representative is here, as well as the Gao's.
Thank you, Consular. That being said, we'd like to move open to the open discussion for public meeting. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor? In favor? That portion of public hearing is now closed.
Actually, Mr. Chairman.
Joseph Janowitz, Urban Renewal Project Manager for the city. I just wanted to come up briefly and just give some support to this project. As mentioned earlier, this is part of the GM plan, it's an urban renewal area for the city. Some of the areas of that district have seen some redevelopment, such as the early garage, Lowell Community Health Center, added mills, counting house lofts. For one reason or another, Appleton Street has kind of lagged behind in that plan. More recently, this board did approve some relief for 232 through 234 Appleton Street to get redeveloped, and now this property here, also on Appleton Street, coming for relief. So, I just hope that the board will also look to approve this one and help Appleton Street kind of join some of the other parts of the district that have seen some revitalization. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Janowitz. It's nice to have you back in the zoning board of appeals hearing room. That being forward, I continue for anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor? In favor? That portion of the public hearing is now closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? That portion of public hearing is now closed. I'd like to open it up to the board members. Van?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Like Mr. Gary, Mr. Janowitz said, I think this development is a good addition to the downtown, the whole master plan. I have no objections. I wish the project great success, so thank you for investing in the city.
Thank you, Mr. Peck.
Thank you, Van. Mark?
I think it's a heck of a plan. We should all look favorably upon it. We're able to restore our historic building, add two more food service establishments to the local economy, and probably more importantly, provide desperately needed housing units to a housing stock. So, I wish you the very best with the project and thank the investors so much for believing in Lowell. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Dennis?
Mr. Chairman, let's ask a couple of questions, but I echo my fellow members' enthusiasm for the project. It's great to see this building getting reused, and reused in such a good way, so I look forward to this being redeveloped. The trash, so in the comments from the city, there was a comment about the need for a plan that showed the way the dumpsters are being utilized, and that was submitted. I just was wondering if you could just speak to that, because it does appear in one of the comments.
Yes, so that was an issue that we addressed with the planning board. So, in the back, there's a courtyard back there, and the Gao's have other property, and they contract with, I think, Harvey and Company, and we had pictures at the planning board meeting of the dumpsters and the size of the dumpsters that they're going to have there. They're the rollout dumpsters, there's going to be three of them, they're probably twice the size of, three that are twice the size of the ones that we have at our houses, as well as a recycling. So, there's four in total, and there's room to have a lot more, but there's four, and they think that that's enough. So, they are going to meet with Harvey and Company, and they're going to figure out exactly how many they need, but the plan right now is three trash bins and one recycling bin that's going to be private, and it's going to go out to Winter Street in the back. So, the private trash removal company is going to come in once a week, get them, take them out to Winter Street, empty them in their truck, and bring them back to the project, I'm sorry, to the property in the courtyard in the back. So, it won't interfere with anything, it won't interfere with egress, it won't interfere with snow removal or anything. There's only some sidewalks back there. It's kind of a unique, almost all of Appleton Street have these, at least the projects that I've been involved in have these little courtyards in the back that are, you can, it looks like a facade driving down the street until you get back there. It's a whole different world, and there's a lot more property back there. It's going to be very nice when it's done. So, they have plans to have that taken in and taken out each week, like my son does at home, but they're paying for it.
And then I just want to ask a couple of questions of the architects as far as how you came up with the arrangements for the units. It's quite nice to see units as well laid out with reasonable space for common space, not just jam-packed, right? So, I just want, because it's commendable that you did not try to get more units in, so I just wanted to just kind of ask how you ended up with this layout.
Okay. Hi, I'm Christina McMahon of Cavenee Architects. I'm a project manager there, and I actually was not involved in the planning of these units, but I know that they did spend some good quality time, and I overheard them, and that's, it was a key point, because it was really easy for them to get really tight and not maneuverable, so, but that is as much as I can speak to that.
Okay, and then the, while we're speaking, the second means of egress is off of a rear stair that goes into the courtyard space?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I just wanted to be clear on that, because it shows up in the plan, but it's kind of ghosted in there, so I just want to make sure that that's actually the plan, right?
So, I know that the ground level, the commercial units, are going to be accessible, fully accessible, and I know that we're exempt for the units above on an elevator, because we are renovation and under 20 units.
Okay.
Yes.
Very good.
So.
Is there a plan for the back spaces that are the commercial-to-be roof spaces available to the units, or right now it just is shown as a gray tone?
Are those single-level stories? I'm not aware.
Okay.
Is that, sorry?
The plan's a little unclear with how the roof structure's being used, if it's being used at all, on that commercial area that forms the courtyard in the back, if it's available to the tenant spaces of the units themselves.
I don't know that, you're asking me if it's allocated to each unit, haven't?
Yeah, is it, it appears that it's not. It appears that it's not.
I don't think it is.
Okay. Just trying to get the full story here.
Yeah.
Okay. Once again, great, great layouts. I'm happy to see well-organized layouts that don't try to get too much out of the space, and great to see the building getting new life, the new glass facade there in the center. It looks great, so, and you're really only looking for a variance for four parking spaces, as I understand it?
Yeah, right, right.
Very good. Thank you.
Well, the total variance is for the 12, right?
Yep.
But it was cut in half from the 24.
Yep, right. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Sean?
Thank you through you, Mr. Chairman. I share the same sentiments of my fellow board members. This makes total sense to revitalize that neighborhood and the building itself. You do have, looking at the plans, and I do always take pause when I see units that are less than 750, 600, you know, with the 400, but looking at it's probably the absolute best way you could just like lay it out, so this makes total sense, so I certainly, you know, will support this, and I wish you the best of luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Well, Consular, you can hear the sentiment of the board. We're very excited as you come forward with these revitalization products along GM plan, something the city's been looking forward, and generations, we've been discussing it, so it's great you have the client that's put the time together and put a good plan together and very organized, and appreciate that. Do you have any other comments or concerns?
No, just hopefully others see what's going on in Appleton Street, and other investors come in and do the same thing. I think it's good for the city.
Agreed. Any other comments or concerns from the board? That being said, may move forward with a motion.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion on ZB 2018-24 for 102 Appleton Street for variance under Section 6.1.4 for off-street parking requirement.
May I have a second? Second. Roll call.
Chairman Perrin?
Approved.
Member Peck?
Approved.
Member Callahan?
Approved.
Member McCarthy?
Approved.
Member Brier?
Approval.
Consular, you've been approved. Congratulations and good luck.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. 193.1 and 239.1 Jackson Street. Hamilton Canal Innovation District Form Base Code. The applicant is seeking variance approval at 193.1 and 239.1 at Jackson Street, HCAD parcels eight and nine, for the construction of a 144,050 square foot mixed-use development that includes 118 residential units. The project requires variance from the Hamilton Canal Innovation District Form Base Code and any other relief required. Petitioner here. Good evening, Consular.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Kevin Broderick, representing Wind Development, and this is a project that's been underway for quite some time, and it's been vetted with the city. It's for the, about a $44 million project to mixed use. It fits with the Hamilton Canal Innovation District, and is not a detriment to the public surrounding. There's four, essentially four variances that my client's looking for. Two are related to a corner of the building that would be, they would be able to build up against where it would meet the Appleton Mills, and what they're looking for is a variance to be able to stop short of that, maintain natural light for the Appleton Mill residents and also for their residents. That triggers two minor variances, and the other two variances are, one for each lot, lots eight and nine, to be able to cross over the public way to create the sky bridge, which would connect the buildings to allow for economies of scale so they can have a first-class facility with one roof deck, one gym, and the amenities associated with that type of development. We were at the historic board a short time ago this evening, and they've given approval to, with their review, and we come before the city council tomorrow night for the easement vote under the city manager's portion, and that would put Wind Development in a position to hopefully finalize funding and close and get in construction in the spring, and we could have the, essentially, first private development over there.
Great. Thank you very much.
Excuse me, I do have members of Wind Development, Icon Architects, if you have questions.
Okay. Thank you, Consular. That being said, I'd like to open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Again, Joseph Janowitz, Urban Renewal Project Manager for the city. I just want to be recorded in favor of this project. Attorney Broderick mentioned, it's been in the works for some time, almost approximately a year since that time. The city has been working with Wind Development on the development plans. Again, recently approved in front of the historic board, it's gone in front of the Conservation Commission, come in front of the Hamilton Canal Designer View Group, has been meeting all the checkmarks, and we're excited to see this project get underway. So, I just hope that you look to approve it tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Janowitz. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Malika Ting, and I'm representing Lowell Community Health Center this evening. I'm not sure if this is in favor or against, but just really wanted to ask about the parking issue, because we know that the Hamilton Canal, with all the development and stuff, has a lot of issues with parking. We do know that another garage is going to be building for the courthouse, but with 118 more units, where's the parking going to be? We already have issues with the early garage for our patients to access parking during the day, when it's full, during when the charter school is available with the RMV, and during the winter seasons. It's really very challenging to find parking for our staff and also for our patients, but just really wanted to, what is the parking going to be like for this new resident?
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, gentlemen. Matt Curtin, I'm the project manager with Wind, working on parcels eight and nine in the Hamilton Canal District. With respect to the parking, I think, you know, we do envision this as a mixed-use development consistent with the city's plan, something that's transit-oriented, within walking distance to the Gallagher Transportation Terminal, city bus service. I don't think we anticipate a tendency that is going to be every unit bringing a car to the project. We have worked in close concert with DPD to secure sufficient parking at the garage that's going up on the opposite side of the Lower Pawtucket Canal, and I think we're confident that the traffic impact and parking impact would be minimal.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? In favor? In favor? That portion of public hearing is now closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? That portion of public hearing is now closed. I'd like to open up to the board. Mark?
Well, long time coming, and this is exciting for the city. We've all anxiously awaited the actual development, construction to begin. You've won the approval of the historic board, the Conservation Commission's given you their okay, you've got a letter of recommendation from the Urban Renewal Project Manager, and Development Services has given you the clear ceiling. So, consider this zoning board member in favor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to just ask a couple of questions, but I too am excited to see this finally come to fruition. The timeline for the tendency for the project, if the construction were to kick off next spring, we're looking at the completion of the project roughly a year away, or how far off are we from the construction being complete?
I'll let Matt in. Sure, so we anticipate a 16-month construction timeline. I think, you know, weather-dependent, we anticipate breaking ground at some point in Q1 2019. It might be more like March, April, again, weather-dependent, so I think probably late summer, early fall, construction complete, start leasing up units of 2020.
And I think that falls in line with the completion of the garage, I hope. I'm sorry, but...
It does, so the, I'll let him speak to it.
Yeah, so the garage is out to bid right now, with the bid going to be completed in October, so in that way, the garage can be substantially complete by the end of 2019. It'll probably be done in January 2020, so it'll be done before this project is completed.
Perfect. Okay. I was just hopeful to hear that. And then I just want to make sure I understand the 24-foot dimension requirement that we're looking at versus the four-foot or four-foot, I think the variance is going from four-foot to 24-foot six. That is in order to allow natural light and windows, is that correct, on that side?
Yes. Step the building back so it's not on top of each other.
Right, right. So, the Form Base Code, which is a wonderful invention, I thought it was going to solve all of our problems, has a slight glitch in it, in that it was actually creating buildings that were too tightly packed, and so we're looking to have that relief as a variance, because that was something that we didn't anticipate, maybe, as far as the natural light coming in between the buildings?
Correct.
Okay. I think that's what I understand.
Yes.
All right. Great. No further questions.
Thank you.
Great project.
Thank you, Dennis. Sean?
Thank you through me, Mr. Chairman. I'm glad to see that this product, this, the projects in this, the Hamilton Canal District are finally coming to fruition. I share the same sentiments of my fellow board members, and very excited to see this moving forward, and I wish you the best of luck. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Van?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Overall, I think this is a good project, you know, a $44 million investment in this district is much needed. You know, a $44 million investment in this district is much needed. The only, I think, comment that I have is to you, Mr. Broderick, or to Mr. Curtin, if you could just work with the health center, they're one of the biggest community hospitals like in the region. I think if they have parking concerns, it's a valid concern. So if you could reach out to the health center, just talk to them in details about your parking plan, we appreciate it. But overall, I think it's a good project. Wish you the best of luck.
Thank you. Thank you, Vern. Counsel, you see no more questions from any of the board members, concerns? We appreciate the detailed plans, folks coming in tonight and having the open conversation. You know, I do echo the comments that this revitalization is taking place and moving forward, and that big investment in the city is well-appreciated. Please take in consideration your neighbors, and I wish you the best of luck over there. I'd like to seek a motion.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion under ZB 2018-25 for 139.1 and 239.1 Jackson Street, HCID Parcels 8 and 9 for variance from the Hamilton Canal Innovation District Form Based Code.
May I have a second?
Second motion.
May I have a roll call, please?
Chairman Curran?
Approve.
Member Peck?
Approve.
Member Callahan?
Approved.
Member McCarthy?
Approved.
Member Greer?
Approval.
Counsel, you've been approved. Congratulations, and best of luck with your project, gentlemen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you for investing in the city.
My client would like to thank the city for being so helpful. Thank you.
Moving forward under new business, ZB 2026 for a variance, 41 Ellis Realty Trust at 41 Ellis Avenue, Section 5.1, 5.3, 6.1, and 6.5. The applicant is seeking variance approval at 41 Ellis Avenue. The applicant's purpose to construct a two-family home without the required lot size, minimum land area per dwelling unit, minimum frontage, minimum usable open space, side setbacks, rear setbacks, front setbacks, off-street parking requirements. The proposed project is located in traditional two-family. Zoning district requires variance approval from the zoning board of appeals under Section 5.1, 5.3, 6.1, 6.5 of the lowes, ordens, and any other relief required. Good evening, sir.
My name is Paul Borbeau. I'm an architect with PHB Architects, PLLC. And I've been involved in this project, providing the documents for the construction of a new two-family. So our intent was to take what was essentially a dilapidated and condemned building from the city and convert it into a new two-family unit that was consistent with the neighborhood, consisted with other structures, not only adjacent to, but within close proximity to this building. So the design came from the existing building. We just expanded the attic space and converted that into limited two-bedroom space. The only other thing that we've added here is we, as we kept the existing foundation in place, we did an inspection of the foundation prior to the start of construction, determined that it was salvageable. And we did add a bulkhead for egress and ingress into the basement only. But beyond that, the footprint is the existing footprint that we built upon.
Thank you. Do you have any other additional handouts or information at this time, sir?
You know, the documents are pretty explicit in terms of what we were trying to do. I have no other information to offer beyond that in terms of the intent of what we're trying to do here, but it's essentially turning what would be a very limited use as a single family into a two-use, which is more viable in this neighborhood and property.
Thank you. That being said, I'd like to open up to the public. Anyone here wishing to speak in favor? In favor? In favor? Wishing to speak in favor, sir?
My name is Joseph Popetti, and I'm the attorney for the developer. I just wanted to touch base on a couple of things after the architect gave you the basic information.
Thank you.
First of all, I would point out that this is a property that was, I believe, in foreclosure. It certainly was off the tax rolls for quite a while. So this proposal will get it back on the tax rolls and obviously significantly increase that tax basis. There is, there is, my understanding that certain members of the neighborhood are concerned about students moving in and what effect it will have on the neighborhood, but I don't think that's really the purpose of the zoning board, to look at the individual tenants or anything like that. We don't know who's going to move in there. But the neighborhood is a neighborhood of one or two families, and this is going to be a two-family. The other thing that I would point out, and I would, the Appeals Court has called the language of the non-conforming use 48 law infelicitous and difficult. And I think that's safe to say. When you try to start looking at this and looking at the zoning bylaw, you have to be very careful. And I don't want it to seem like I'm lecturing, because I'm not. I'm suggesting that this is not a non-conforming use. The use is appropriate, according to the zoning bylaw, non-conforming use is a use that's inappropriate in that zoning district. Two-family residence is appropriate in that district. What it is, is a non-conforming structure. But it's a non-conforming structure in which the footprint will not be changed. I've been having a problem all day. I apologize. The footprint will not be changed. The only change will be the height, and that height change still falls within the present limits of the zoning bylaw. So what they're trying to do here is get a property back on the rolls that makes fiscal sense, that will help the city with, in various ways, and will provide for more good housing in the city. So, as I say, I think based on the review of the bylaw and the mass statute and the cases and everything, I think we're well within appropriate considerations. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Speak in favor? Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name is Paul Landry. I live at 16 Third Avenue, which is right around the corner from Ellis Avenue. And I think that they should be allowed to have this all fixed up this way because this fellow who owns this place has been spending years fixing up old buildings like this and getting them all renovated and people living in them. And one of those buildings is directly across the street from me. It was finished a year ago, little less than that. And the people started moving in in May, in June. And it's a nice, quiet area. And before this, there was nothing but a bunch of drunks living in that little building, and it was burned down. So this guy took it over and rebuilt it from top to bottom. You know, and it's really beautiful inside. And this is what he's doing with this building also on Ellis Avenue. And I think this should be granted. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thanks for coming out. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? In favor? Good evening.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Sandra McNamara, retired inspector for the city. And I just have to say that in the many, many, many years I've worked in this city, this is one contractor that has always, always took in pride of what everybody else was looking for. He always tried to make every singlebody happy. And also, the elegance that he puts in something in a building is just remarkable. And if nobody has, or anybody has ever been to Farmland Road, it's their office. And it came from a church to elegance. And again, he is a contractor that goes over and above, and I hope he granted. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others wishing to speak in favor? Good evening, sir.
Sean Shanahan, here to speak on behalf of De Rosa Properties. I was a building contractor for the city of Lowell for some time. De Rosa Properties has done approximately $52 million worth of business in this city. Rehabbing old properties all the way down Fletcher Street, all the way out through Pawtucketville. We need to give these guys the opportunity to help this city, not hinder them. Roadblocks are being put in ways, and this property was sold at auction with an ad from the city of Lowell that actually said potentially can be a two-family property. And I don't know exactly how that was worded, but that was in the ad, and that's the direction that he followed. I feel that he deserves a fair shot to get this property online and not be held up. That's it.
Thank you, sir. Any others wishing to speak in favor? In favor? In favor? That portion of the public hearing is now closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition?
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
I'm Tom Flynn, 39 Waterford Street. And from some of what I've heard, you're right. I was pushing for that building that was dilapidated to be rehabbed, to be fixed. Unfortunately, what has happened is the building got auctioned off in November of last year. The building was taken down. The field stone foundation was repointed, and bulkhead stairs were put in. Then building began. Part of the building extends beyond the foundation. There are three floors with two dormers on the third floor. There are columns that hold up one section of the building. I question, why was this stopped? Because it was stopped? Or was there no approval for the building in the first place? Is the purpose to rent to college students? And we've just been taught that this is not your concern, but it is ours. There's already one house on Ellis that rents to college students. A hose was run from this rental at 46 Ellis to 41 for doing the repointing of the foundation. Owners of these two properties are listed as 41 Ellis Realty Trust and 46 Ellis Realty Trust. Is that a coincidence? Or is that just the way everybody does things now? I have a question that, is this a pattern for this owner? To build something and then get approval? Is the relative communication between city agencies? Or was a city official correct when he said at a council subcommittee meeting a few months ago, "Once it is bought, they can do what they want with it"? My grave concern is, you're going to have college kids here, you're going to have parking, and we have college kids at 46 Ellis. Is the whole place just going to become a dorm? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition?
Good evening. My name is George D. Emerson. I live at 80 Ellis Ave. I have three areas of concern. It looked like a three-family and not a two-family. My, one of my biggest concerns is that, the possibility of a fire. I mean, if, if that should go, that will take out a few more. It's not, not just that house. I mean, they wouldn't stand a chance of getting out of there. There's no way. The last is parking. Parking on Ellis Ave is a premium. That is my biggest concern. That and the safety issue of a fire. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any others wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? Good evening.
Good evening. My name is John Kapler. I live at 17 Waterford Street. Not long ago, my neighbor who lived at 11 Waterford Street moved out because of the parking and moved to another section of the city. The building, the building sold right away, thankfully. But that's, that's a solid example of the parking problem we have in that neighborhood. A person sold their house because of parking. My understanding is that this building, when it was sold, was sold with a special permit. And that special permit allowed for a single-family home to be built there. The person that bought it never executed the special permit. And they begun building the building with no building permit. It got to the point where you see it today, and it was stopped by the city. It was changed from a single-family to a two-family without any approval. The two-family creates variances. And I think I've heard this board say on several occasions, you can't do things that create variances. But by changing it from a one-family to a two-family, you've done just that. One of those variances is for frontage. Your ordinance says that you can reduce the frontage by up to 15 feet. But if you did, it still wouldn't pass. So if you pass two variances and reduce it 15 feet with each of those variances, it still doesn't pass. It's only 40 feet wide. The frontage variance is the least of the problems. The other problem is, of course, parking. And we're not unique. Our neighborhood is not unique. It's just like every other place in the city. Parking is a big problem. And this isn't going to make it any better. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any others wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? Good evening.
Good evening. Jim McInnesby, 26 Ellis Avenue. The big problem is that they're putting in five bedrooms, and they can be adapted out to have two people in each room. And that's going to cause a parking problem. And on the street as it is, like you just heard, we have a problem and we want the time for parking. And why not? Because there is no place to push the snow. We all have to dig in to what we have to do. And the parking problem is the biggest thing. The, there isn't just, there's any room on the street to park when they, the city wants to plow. When they do plow, they do a good job, and they really pack it in there. Because I know I have to plow it six times a night. And, excuse me. The, the parking, they're showing two in the driveway and two in front of the house in which the city doesn't permit, even, even with a plat, with a sign saying, somebody's telling, parking. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any others wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition?
Hi.
My name is Roger Karen. I live at seventy-two Ellis Ave. I've been there for forty-two years now, and I've seen a lot of these single-family homes being changed into two-families. And the problem is, is I've had to call the police many times to have them stop from parking in front of my driveway even. That house used to have parking between the buildings and went out front for a single-family. But they extended out, I don't know if you're seeing on the print, which eliminated that off-street parking. So now it's only street parking that they all have. That's a, you know, like I said, seeing all these buildings changing from single families to two families, and nobody's creating the parkings for their vehicles, is creating a funnel down at the end of the street for the winter when the plows come. We have them lined up at the end of the street where the plows can no longer plow straight through. They have to stop, back up, push the snow over this way. I work nights a lot because I work in maintenance, so I come home at different hours. So I see a lot of the different things that go on. This is gonna create a problem for the city when it comes to plowing time also, not just for parking, but for everybody else. So I just wanted to give you the head up. At one time, that building didn't extend out on your right-hand side if you're looking at it. It now does. So when they're saying that there was no change to the foundation or the building, there's a little bit of a discrepancy there.
Thank you, sir. Any others wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? Good evening.
Pat Whiting, thirty-one Waterford Street. The attorney for the builder brought up the fact that it's not your job if it's student housing or if it's a two-family. Who is responsible if they're gonna turn it into a boarding house as opposed to two-families that are responsible living there? That's the biggest issue there because it does create parking problems. And if they say two-family and then rent it out to ten students, it's a heck of a difference.
Thank you. Any others wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition?
My name is James McMorris, twenty-one Leonard Circle. I speak on behalf of the Patacaville Citizens Council and on behalf of some of the residents and neighbors of Ellis Ave. Changing the usage of land in the neighborhood. The whole process of seeking a variance and approval has been taken away from the city and the neighborhood. A building permit has not even been issued. The voice in the jurisdiction you have as a zoning board and our voice as neighbors gone with this house. A precedent will be set if this project is allowed to go forward as built today. This builder has taken advantage of the city, and now it is time for the city zoning board to step up to the plate and set a precedent that this kind of behavior from builders and developers will not be tolerated. Without the required setbacks, frontage, driveway spaces, this building changes the dynamics in the neighborhood. While it is my right to speak to you, it is within your right to force changes on this builder's building to conform with the city zoning code at present. The builder may claim hardship now and ask for forgiveness by the city. He might even plead ignorance on the due process of building in this neighborhood or city. But to me, from the signage on the building, it is clear and evident that the building does know the process. These actions taken by the builder are a blatant disregard for the city's and zoning board's regulations, and you should all be offended by this builder's actions. I know I am. To allow this structure as it stands today with no modifications going forward will only allow this builder to laugh all the way to the bank on a short-term basis. But most importantly, on a long-term basis, it will have an adverse effect on this neighborhood and this street in particular. The builder's actions, or should I say inactions, should not have an effect on a neighborhood in a negative way as this property will do. I was able to personally speak to several people in the neighborhood who don't have the confidence to stand before you tonight and speak out against this building being left as it is today without changes. They are sad, they're mad. So let's take this opportunity to make it right all around for the neighbors, the neighborhood, and our city. If the building is asking for hardship, the board needs to look at the hardship he has created in the neighborhood that will go on for a long time and that others will have to endure because of his lack of understanding of procedure and/or policy when the burden should solely be placed upon him to correct. This is the time to do it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any others wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition?
Deb Porjioni, Patacaville Citizen Council. Thank you, Jim. Okay, so we're in a unique position here that we have a seasoned zoning board, and everybody knows when it comes to zoning variances, what's required. And we've been before you many, many times, and many, many times been on the right side in your favor and sometimes in opposition, but that's why we're here, because neighbors get to speak. The developer probably is a good developer, and there is people that work for the city that support him, that they know him. But we're neighbors. You know, we're not involved in the everyday goings-on in the city hall, but what we do know is how life affects us and what's fair and what's reasonable. And I just don't think that the project has the full background of really what happened because I got an email from Eric Slagel that said, "That building originally there should have never been torn down." And he said the applicant was confused, and he tore it down, and he wasn't supposed to. So this is a seasoned builder. Everyone's saying he's seasoned, he's seasoned, but in this case here, if you, I don't know if you have the email from Eric Slagel, but he said it should not have been torn down, that the developer was confused. So let's say he is a good developer, and now he's confused, and now we have this. So that's one thing. And also, we've been asking about this property because that neighborhood really is a tough, cute neighborhood that has a real big problem with parking. So they're very sensitive to it. So as a zoning board, if you're gonna give him this variance, if that's what you choose to do, you also need a solution for the neighborhood. Because according to this, for him to build that, these are the seven ordinances you have to give him. Because the home doesn't have required lot size, it doesn't have required minimum land area per dwelling, it doesn't have minimum lot frontage, it doesn't have minimum usable open space, it doesn't have side setbacks, it doesn't have rear setbacks, it doesn't have front setbacks, and the most important, it doesn't have off-street parking requirements. It does not meet that standard. So when someone says, "Well, I'm gonna be building a two-family," great. Two-families usually have two bedrooms each floor. This one has five bedrooms. So now you're gonna give a variance on a two-family, but now this is not really a two-family. It's got five bedrooms. So you say, "Well, where are the other three bedrooms? Is that the third floor?" But you don't have enough information in front of you to really make a good decision. I've seen you have plans in front of you, so when you're making a decision and you're looking to give variances, you have like details in front of you. So when you go on record and you do what the zoning board does, and you go home at night, you know the decision you made was based on XXX. I think you might, it looks surprised when I told you that should not have been torn down. And it's also overlapping the original foundation. So it overlaps the original foundation, it's got five bedrooms, it doesn't have the parking requirements. So whatever variances you feel that this project warrants, that's what you're here to do, but you also have the wisdom that, how are you gonna help the people over here with the parking? You can give someone a variance, but what have you got in place for them that once you give the variance, that the neighborhood has to deal with the parking? So that's what I wanted to say, and I think that the last thing I would just like to say is, I don't think you have enough information tonight to give seven variances. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition?
Evening, gentlemen. My name's Ray Barrowich. I live on seventeen Ellis Ave. You know, it's nice, everybody heaping praise on this individual builder or whatever like that, but, and I heard he's built other places. How can you have seven violations and no permit? I mean, the guy's familiar with the game here. There's nothing new. And on top of that, as Jim was saying over there, I mean, the city's been involved with this project for two, three years. I don't even know the disconnect between the city involvement and him going ahead with all these violations. You know, it just, it blows my mind away. The other thing, you know, excuse me, that's a three-family going up. Come on. There's dormers on the roof. You know, I'm a college student. I graduated in engineering. He's gonna pack college kids in there, and everybody's joking about this, like, you know, blah, 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 what's the big deal and everything like that? I tell you what, give me everybody's telephone number. The attorney can give me this telephone number. I'll give you guys a call when I'm breaking up parties at three o'clock in the afternoon or at night. It's gonna happen. Everybody's talking about a parking issue. It's nasty. Jim alluded to snow removal and everything like that. Let me give you an idea just shortly of what the parking's like. You go into Ellis Ave, there's a yellow building there. It's seven tenants. There's only four parking places. Right across the street, Domino's is right there. He was courteous enough to let them use it, but once that property's gone, boom, it's only seven parking places for seven apartments. Go up one, there's two apartments there, two parking places. Now you come to my house. All right, plenty of parking, everything like that, but guess what? The city put a fire hydrant in front of her house. She can't park there anymore. I gave her permission to park on my place. You can walk your way all the way up there, and you're gonna find parking problems. What else? To okay this variance today, you're setting a precedence that anybody else in Lowell, especially on that street, can use. Well, you did it for him, why can't you do it for me? I'm familiar, very familiar with the lawyer's games. That's what they're gonna start pulling here. You know, we're being hoodwinked by him. Again, I wanna iterate, the guy's a builder. How can he miss permits? I'm blown away by that. I don't mean to insult the gentleman or anything like this, but he could care less. He's into making money. He's not gonna have to tolerate students. He's not gonna have to tolerate when the city calls your house in the middle of winter to use a parking garage to park your car. He's probably living in a nice house, everything's fine and everything, you know, come on. You know, it's ridiculous. You got another problem too happening on that street, sixty-one Ellis Ave.
Sir, we're here to speak on this petition.
Okay. I mean, it's critical. You know, people might sell it short or whatever. It's gonna turn into student housing, and there's no parking. And you know what? If the city is so interested in okaying this house, then fine, the city can sell part of their park in the back there and put in asphalt, and he can buy it, and there's all your parking. It's all done. There's a solution. I just, I've lived there for eighteen years now. It's getting ridiculous, sir. I'm sorry, I don't see any connection between UMass and the City of Lowell to sit there and discuss issues like this, but they're serious. We've had the police up there numerous times. I'm sure you can go down there and pull the police logs and everything and see Ellis Ave and go from there. I am definitely one-hundred-and-twenty percent opposed to this. He wants to make it into a single-family? Fine, go for it. It's gonna lead to a nightmare if it goes two-family with, I might add, a dormer. I went to college, they're gonna pack them in there like rats, and each one of those kids has a car. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any others wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? That portion of public hearing is now closed. We're gonna move it open to the board. Mark.
Well, this is the time for comments, but before I can issue any comments, I just have so many darn questions. And to you, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask Patrick, representing the city here, that some of the comments that the residents are making about there being something improper with the developer and the permitting process, is that the, does the city agree that there was any breakdown or anything improper or inappropriate with the permitting process?
So as outlined in Christine McCall's comment memo, there was, in order to rebuild the structure that was there, in order to reconstruct the structure, a special permit was needed to reconstruct what was there. That would limit the structure to the number of stories, the ground floor, the floor area, and the use itself. Unfortunately, the structure was demolished and was starting to be rebuilt or reconstructed. And at that point, when planning staff was aware, a cease and desist was ordered, and we had the applicant apply for these variances that he would need in order to do the two-family that he would like.
Was the city aware that it was going to be demolished? Should we not have been aware of that?
So if, the city should have been aware that it was demolished if the applicant was planning on doing a two-family because that's when the variances were needed?
I mean, no, correct me if I'm wrong, because again, I'm not casting aspersions. I'm just looking for answers. I wouldn't think that anyone can just go out and demolish their home without proper, without approval.
A permit is required for demolition, and I believe.
Was that granted?
I believe a demo permit was approved or issued.
Okay, so that part is okay?
Yep.
All right. Now.
A point of clarification, clerk has brought to my attention, he'll read into the record as it relates to the demolition of the property.
The memorandum from Senior Planner McCall, paragraph two, indicates that the single-family dwelling was permitted to be demolished on five eighteen, twenty eighteen. So it appears that some, a permit was issued to allow the demolition.
Okay, so it appears as though that the concerns that some of the residents had as to that being done improperly, it wasn't. It was all done in accordance with our permitting procedures, the demolition, correct?
Right. I mean, he's allowed to demolish.
Okay.
Property owners allowed to demolish their structure with the permit.
So now, it was purchased as a single-family home, but it's in the two-family zone? All right. When the developer went to turn it into a two-family, did he meet those permitting requirements?
So I believe construction began before, a process that was before our zoning office that we, so that we weren't able to review the fact that a two-family was being constructed. When we noticed that work was beginning, that's when we issued a cease and desist, and that's why the applicant's here.
So that was done improperly?
That was not vetted by the zoning office.
Okay. So what's the remedy for that?
This process.
Okay, so the city says, "You stop."
You have to stop and.
And they're here to see us?
Right.
All right. My next question is, with respect to whether we have any say in how the units are gonna be rented, I think we do have a say because there is a zoning ordinance that says that no more than three unrelated individuals can occupy a unit. Now, when we refer to unit, we're talking about, there's only two units in the building, correct? So we do have some purview over whether this is a traditional two-family or these are gonna be dorm rooms. I mean, it would be in violation if more than three unrelated people are residing in that five-bedroom unit. So is the developer willing to declare how he's gonna market this property? Is he marketing? how he's gonna market this property? Is he marketing it to college students, or is he marketing as a, as a traditional two-family?
I would ask Stephen DeRosa to address that directly, if you want, Stephen. How are you gonna market it?
Sorry, didn't know I'd be speaking, so I would've addressed it properly. We put it out to the market and whatever the market bears, you know, it's not, it's not, it's not-
I don't think that's a fair answer.
Okay.
All right, because whatever the market bears, I mean, if, if it's a traditional two-family, one unit, two bedrooms, one unit, five bedrooms, when I think of traditional two-family, I say, okay, the family on the first floor is a much smaller family unit than the family on the second floor. So, are you renting to two families, or are you renting to unrelated people in that five-bedroom? What do you propose to do?
We have a lot of units in the city that we rent to students, and we rent to regular families.
Well, I'm not asking you about any of your other units. I'm asking you about this specific unit. The five-bedroom, how do you intend to fill it with residents?
We put it out to the broker market, and they, and they list it-
Right, and you have to tell your broker, are you looking for a large family, or are we looking for college students?
We get, we have both. Sorry.
No, I understand you get both, but what is your intention for this unit? You're evading the question.
I don't mean to. We have a lot of units in the-
You don't have to.
But we, we have a lot of units in the city. We rent to both students and non-students.
Okay, so, I think my question's rather simple. Are you marketing the five-bedroom to one large family, or are you renting rooms?
We don't rent rooms.
All right, then-
Fair across the board, we do not rent any rooms.
Then what do you call it when, you know, eight college, eight, eight guys going to college rent the five-bedroom? What do you call that?
We don't rent, in any of our buildings, we do not rent more than-
So, one guy goes up, says, I'll, I'll rent it for X amount a month, and he just collects the money from all his buddies, and then essentially he becomes a dorm unit?
No, what we do, when we do rent to students, if it's, let's say, a four-bedroom apartment, four students rent it and four parents co-sign the lease. It's one lease to four students.
Okay, is that what you're doing in this instance?
We may.
You may?
We may.
So, so I, I began this by asking if you're willing to declare to the residents, to give them some assurance as to who's gonna occupy this building, whether it's gonna be a large family or college students, you're not willing to declare that?
No, I don't know who's, no, I would not want that restriction against the property that I own, that I'm forced to rent it to a specific person or people.
All right, I, we're going in circles here.
I don't mean to. I'm just trying to be, I'm-
No, I, you know, I'm not, I'm not trying to speak negatively of your, of your character. I, I don't know you, sir, but I just don't think that's a difficult question to ask. I don't think it's a difficult, excuse me, a difficult question to answer.
If you're asking, do I put a sign up saying, "to students only"? No, it's-
No, I'm not asking you to put a sign up. I'm saying, it sounds as though that's what you're looking to do.
We, we absolutely rent a lot of units to students, yes.
So, okay, so, let's rent it out to, I don't know how many, I mean, you can't have more than three unrelated people, right? So, if you have five bedrooms, you couldn't rent it to five unrelated individuals. So, those couldn't be stu-, it couldn't be student housing. Am I interpreting that correctly?
Yes, so not more than three unrelated persons in one unit.
So, if, if, if you did rent to college students, you could have no more than three individuals upstairs that weren't related. Is that correct? And do you have sufficient park, is the parking sufficient to meet that?
I do own the building across the street that has ample parking for the building across the street and this property.
So, if the three, if there's three college students occupying the five-bedroom, you will, you're gonna provide parking for them across the street at your, at forty-six? Is that it?
Yes, absolutely.
Can I, can I just add to that? Under the zoning provision, under six point one point five, notes to parking table, paragraph four, common shared parking is allowed through an easement or a fee title.
Okay.
And that would be the intention here, to be some type of easement to the property for the shared parking.
Yeah. No, I haven't made any judgment. I don't want you to think I'm coming down harshly on you. I'm trying to get some answers for myself and for these residents here. I mean, the, their concerns seem really valid to me, but of course, you have rights also. So, it's hard your job to determine, you know, what, what's rightful and what isn't. I think I'll yield the remainder of my time to one of my colleagues, so I can get a, maybe grasp a better understanding of exactly what this proposal is.
Thank you, Mark.
Thanks, Steve.
Time is reserved. Moving to Dennis, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to ask a couple of questions, but before I start, Patrick, I just want to be clear as to the process with the structure that was torn down, and then the new structure that was built. Were there plans submitted to the city for a two-family structure to be built, and that permit was, was given to the contractor?
So, I don't believe our zoning office has received any plans to reconstruct the two-family that started. Otherwise, they would've had to, would've gone through this process, and we would've given them the variance applications.
Okay, because that's, that's how the comments read, and I'm just kinda confused, because the, the board noticed that there were two front doors, and suddenly there was a, you know, red flag that this looks like it's a two-family and not a single family anymore, and so that's kind of where things kind of started to-
Right.
-change. Wow, okay. So, the intent was to build a two-family without going through the proper process of getting the plan submitted for permit, it seems. Is that correct?
That was not the intent, not to go through the proper process. I, we developed a set of plans for a two-family. I think there was some either misunderstanding or miscommunication between the city and Mr. DeRosa regarding the fact that if he took this property over, that the possibility existed that he could convert it into a two-family. I think the unfortunate thing that happened was that there was a delay between the time that they tore the building down and the time they started construction. I think they felt that they would have their permit in place by then, but that was not the case, and there was some issue with the zoning regarding the two-family. It wasn't a right given by right when he purchased the property, when I, and I think part of the problem was, he thought that that, that was the case. So, I think there was some misunderstanding on their part. But I, I've been involved in many projects with Mr. DeRosa and his company over the years here in Lowell. We try and do the best that we can with what we're given. We try and go through the procedures. If we have to come to this board, we have before in the past, we'll come to the board and present our plans. That was not the intention in this case. I think the, the other thing that's kind of being misrepresented is Mr. DeRosa's kind of an absentee tenant, when in fact, he spent a considerable amount of money to move his office in operation here in Lowell, so he was part and parcel of the community, and he was also available to his tenants, because it's difficult when you're a landlord with many buildings, and you have all these people trying to pay their rent every month, and, you know, where's it go? Well, now they've got somebody they can walk right up to and, and see and, and talk to. He's not an absentee landlord at all. As a matter of fact, from a, from the community standpoint, we're very sensitive about what we're doing in terms of development. We've tried to turn around a lot of vacant properties here in the city, and to the benefit, not only of Mr. DeRosa, but the benefit of the city as well.
Thank you. Okay. But we obviously have a lot of residents, neighbors-
Mm-hmm.
-that are not happy with the process, and we have a lot of variances that we're looking for relief on-
Correct.
-that we wouldn't have had a structure already in place, looking at us with all these var, and this is just a, not, not, an unfortunate scenario for sure. But you mentioned something about parking-
Right.
-that you have the property across the street-
Right.
...that has ample parking for its tenants and has maybe additional parking, but we don't have a plan that proves that.
Mm-hmm.
We have nothing in front of us that shows that you do have that actually available. So-
Right.
-even if we were to make that a condition, if we were to do anything, we don't have anything that assures us that that's real.
Mm-hmm.
I, 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 at best, I'm, I would support continuing this until we have more information, but boy, oh, boy, this is a tough one for me to say. God, I like what you've done in the city. I like your other projects, but this one is just not like you. I don't know what happened.
No, and I, I would point out that the building itself, the footprint has not changed, even though there's been some talk about the footprint changing. There's a small porch area that was never used.
You seem like a great guy, but one of the comments is that we can't have openings on the side of a building, and the plans that you presented have openings on the bathrooms on the first-floor unit and bedroom, and a bedroom on the second unit.
Mm-hmm.
But we have a document that says that, it, does it conform with code?
It needs to be rated.
So, we can have rated windows?
Mm-hmm.
Is that a shutter? What are you doing to rate them?
You can, you can do a shutter. You can do rated glazing.
So, you're gonna have rated operable windows?
Yes.
Great. Okay, so you do have an answer?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right, so there were an awful lot of comments here that came from our residents on parking you seem to have an answer for. There's no intent to have a three-family structure here, it seems.
That was never the intent.
And I don't see the plans even supporting it, because you don't have two means of vigorous from the third floor.
No.
So, I don't see how that could possibly even be-
The means of vigorous from the third floor is through that unit. It's, it's one unit.
So, there's no way that could possibly be ever conformed to a-
The only way would be to add another stair to the exterior of the building. That was not the intention.
Which you don't really have the footprint to do-
No.
-even if you wanted to.
No, it was never our intention to do a three-family. It was always a two-family.
Okay. And, Patrick, there's a letter from Eric Slager regarding the building being torn down. Is that, is that something that was available for the board? I don't think we saw that.
No, that wasn't something that was necessarily addressed to the board. It was intended to be. There was just a question raised, and he answered it.
Okay.
If that's something that the board would like, that could happen.
If, if we do happen to continue this tonight, I'm not sure what the rest of the board members want to do, but I would just like to have that available, just so we kind of get a full picture of the whole process here. And I'm just surprised that you're caught like this, because you guys do great work, but this is just so strange as far as the scenario. But if the parking is available across the street, I'd love to see a plan drafted that understands how that works and how that could be supported. And then I also would like to see a, a document that states that the building footprint actually is a hundred percent the same as what the original structure was. This idea of the structure growing on the sides, making that setback on the side worse than it was, would bother me if it was the case. So, I'd just like to see some kind of document that kind of helps that. Great, okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis, Sean.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I, I really have some serious concerns with this, especially, one, one of my main concerns is been brought up by D P D in their comments about the height and stories of the structure, that they can't even determine.
The height of the structure?
They're finding it hard to determine what the, and based on what's been submitted, it appears that this is a three-story unit, not two-point-five. I can't, I can't figure it out, but the plans don't seem to show what the height of the building is. I went by there this afternoon, on my way here, and although there are other two-family units in the, in the vicinity, that, that, based on my, my review, what's up there seems higher than, they seem like they're taller than what's in what other two-family units are in the area. So, do you have what the, the height of the structure is and how we can justify that that third floor is not a story, it's, or half a story?
The, the third floor is built into the roof attic. That's why it's not considered a full story. It does not have full-height walls on the side. It has knee walls. So, those knee walls are four feet tall, and then it slopes to the roof. And I have a, I think there's a building section in your material. Yeah. In the material that I presented, you do have a building section, and it shows a cross-section. It shows a cross-section through that third level, and you can see that we have, you know, four-and-a-half-foot, five-foot knee walls there, and a height to the underside of the roof ra, or the collar ties of eight feet in the very middle, but that's only about a three, three-to-four-foot wide area of an eight-foot ceiling.
Well, this is, yeah, this, but this is, this is my point here, and it's that I don't know what the sizes of, how, 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 the, the size of the walls on the sides of the units. I don't know how, how, how high they are inside.
The only thing that's missing in this section is the dimension to the top of the ridge, the attic level, but the overall height is thirty-three feet, just under thirty-three feet. Thirty-five feet is a maximum in this sound for a two-family.
Well, the other thing you pointed out, as far as the parking's concerned, you had mentioned about the fact that, you know, you could, because he owns the property on the other side, deeded by easement, is there any easement that's on, on record with the registry?
No, there is not currently. That's what we'd have to do.
Okay, so at this point right now, that wouldn't count, because there's no easement. There would be, there's no easement, so we can't take that into account. If there was an easement, we could.
Okay.
So, there, there are way too many questions on this. There's a lot of relief on this. I probably would consider Dennis's recommendation as far as continuing this. I certainly would like, I mean, I would like to see what the email that was referenced with Director Slagle that's about, about allegations of whatever, not allegations, but what's being, what was said that the building wasn't supposed to be demolished, even though, based on the memo we got from D P D, it was permitted, so, and-
Well, I have the permit right here, if you want to see that.
Yeah, I saw you pull it out, too. So, I just, there's, there's a lot of questions here that need to be answered, and I would probably, I, I would, I would entertain Dennis's recommendation that we continue this, but, well, I'll, I'll will and listen to the remainder of my board members, but I've got, I got some serious concerns about this, so, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Sean, Ben.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I always think it's a good idea when, you know, old dilapidated buildings can be rehabbed or, you know, upgraded. I do share the concerns of my colleagues. I'm actually looking at a photo on Google Maps dated from July two thousand and twelve. It does have the condemned logo or the public logo on it, and at the very least, so the, the email from Senior Planner McCall, it probably was approved, condemned, and proved to be demolished as well. You know, you are looking for a lot of relief, sir. I think my biggest concern is, and we're still just talking about, you know, so I think a lot of people concerned is, it's, one unit is two bedrooms, and the other's, it's a five-bedroom, and then the concern with, you know, parking and, you know, I think people are concerned that for each, each of those bedrooms, there could be potentially seven more cars, and you did say this, you have some parking across the, 'cause, 'cause Mr. DeRosa owns the other building in front of it. Would, would you or your client be opening to, to downsizing the numbers of units, maybe a two and a four, or two and a three?
I, I would leave that question, Mr. DeRosa.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just asking, see what your thoughts are about that.
What are your thoughts about that?
I think if you can reduce the number of, of, like, bedroom units, I think a lot of people feel more comfortable. But, you know, it's, it's your property, it's your, it's your unit, you know, I just wanted to see what, what you have to say on that.
Sure.
I'm sorry, I don't quite get the question.
So, you submitted plans for, for two units, one for two bedrooms and one for five bedrooms?
Mm-hmm.
Would you, would you be open to making it a two-bedroom and a three-bedroom, or like a two-bedroom, a four-bedroom, you know what I mean?
I didn't come prepared to answer that.
I didn't come prepared to answer that.
And it's just a question, I mean, like I said, sir, it's, it's your property, you can, you know, you can do as you wish, but I think, I would feel more comfortable if you can downsize or downscale the units, the bedroom units, and I think some people would feel more comfortable as well. You know, those are just my thoughts, but I, I concur with Mr. McCarthy, you know, I'm in favor of continuous to get some more information. But, but those are the comments I have at the moment, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Van. Mark, do you have any further comments, concerns?
No, I'm no less confused than I was at the beginning.
Very well. Any other comments, Mr. McCarthy?
I think, Mr. Chairman, actually, what Van mentioned about changing the unit quantity, the number of bedrooms, the first-floor unit has a living room, I guess, living room, dining area, and two bedrooms, and a kitchen. But on the second-floor unit, the space allotted to the living room, kitchen, is, there's no dining area set aside, and there's a bedroom three in that place where the dining room is. It might be worth considering, just as making a better layout in general, but reducing also the quantity of bedrooms. But what Van just mentioned, I think, looking at the plan a second time, matching the open area available to the kitchen, living, dining space, might have some merit. It might be worth looking at, that's all.
Thank you, Dennis. Any other comments?
Sean. Mr. Chairman, I'd probably recommend, if we're going to consider continuing this, and if the applicant is willing to agree, I'd like to see updated elevation plans, because I can't figure out, I can't figure out how tall it is.
I'd be happy to provide that, too.
Yeah, I mean, it's got so many different layers and stuff, it's, it's, it's very difficult to, to follow. So I just want to make, I want to be absolutely clear that this is meeting the high requirements on that, but that's, that's the only comment I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Van?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, if we're going to continue this matter, through you to Mr. Burns. Mr. Burns, could we just also get a report from, I know there's some neighbors' concerns about fire issues or for the fire department, could we just have the fire department weigh in, like emergency services, fire department weigh in, if we continue this? Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. So, so you've, you've heard the comments and concerns of the neighborhood, the board members. Clearly, there are some, there are some missing items here. As Dennis has mentioned, you've been before us on many occasions. Each and every project has been very detailed and planned out. There seems to be, in your words, disconnect or miscommunications, and I think primarily we can all agree that disconnect and communication leads to frustration, anxiety, misinformation, misrepresentation of information. Certainly, I know myself, and I'm confident speaking for my fellow board members, we're very appreciative for the residents of our city to come out and speak their concerns and give us their view. They live there, they've resided here in some cases for decades, but as Mr. Brier pointed out, you as representative of the builder have rights and access to property as well, and you have shown that in a positive light in the, in past projects, so I, I don't want that to be not put on public record.
I appreciate that, Mr. Chairman.
I, I think it's, in fairness to everybody in this room, I think there are just a few questions that are raised. Certainly, I would like to see the email from the director and just follow up and perhaps itemize through those, each and, each and every comment, and take into consideration of my colleagues here, and a downsized plan, and an updated elevation plan. Only you, sir, and your client can make the, make the decision to move forward with a, with a continuance? I can, I can well inform you that the board does not feel comfortable with some of the information that's missing, and
Well, if, if the board is so inclined to continue this hearing, we'd be willing to go back to the drawing board and address some of these issues, particularly from the residents' perspective as well, to make this a better project for everyone.
I agree, I think that's, that's well said for, for everybody on both sides. To that point, any other comments or questions?
One other suggestion, Mr. Chairman, as far as if we're going to grant the continuance, the, if, if there's any, going to be any reliance upon utilizing parking on a separate lot, we would need to see a plan on that as well.
Yes, Mr. Callahan, we'll do, we'll do that.
Yep.
I believe there's a reference to the easement on the
Yes.
the parallel, the budding
Patrick, I mean, I guess if they come in with a plan on a separate lot, even though an easement hasn't been recorded, we can still, could we could still, still consider it, or would, would that be, would the easement have to be, wouldn't easement have to be recorded?
Yeah, so there, there would need to be an agreement in order for the board to approve such shared parking configuration.
Yeah, I guess my, my question being, they come in with a plan saying, okay, we're going to record an easement on this property for parking with this building if you consider granting this. Is that something we are able to consider, or does the easement itself have to be recorded before we even take any?
I think the board should see the language in the agreement put in place, and probably if they were able to, willing to approve such project or plan, they would condition that this be recorded.
Yeah, maybe that's something to bring up a lot. Why don't I, I mean, if, if you can just, if you can get the plan, if you have a plan and, and there's going to be, and there is a plan to record some easement with regards to parking, if you can submit it to DPD prior to that, so we can maybe have an opportunity to have the law department
Yeah, we'd be happy to do that.
weigh, weigh in as far as whether we are able to consider it without an easement being recorded, I guess. I guess that's my, that'll be my, all right, thank you.
Certainly, I agree with Mr. Callahan. That memorandum of understanding or that type of language should be submitted on the easement. In order for us to be in agreement, it would have to be recorded, so we, I would like to have the law department weigh in on that, so that we're all, we're all in agreeance with that.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, sir, real quick, through you. I do want to echo the sentiments of the chairman. You, sir, and Mr. DeRosa do amazing work in the city and the community, it's quite an investment, you know, over $52 million worth of investments in other properties. So I, I don't want to, you know, sound like I'm belittling Mr. DeRosa or anything, I think you've invested a lot. I think we're just trying to find a balance between the needs of the residents and the needs of, of the developer. So, you know, I think continued and we'll work out a more detailed plan, and I think that's more favorable to everybody. So, so thank you for all the investments you've done in the city. We do appreciate it. So I just want to say that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Van. Any other comments or concerns for the members of the board? Mr. McCarthy.
Sorry, this is my last one, I promise.
Public meeting for a reason, sir.
I'd just like to see a stronger narrative from the applicant regarding the relief being sought, because it's substantial, and I'd just like to understand why this project merits this much relief, please.
Sure.
Because I'm not hearing it other than the fact it's kind of built. That's not enough. All right, thank you.
Last thing, Mr. Chairman.
Certainly.
Yes, sorry.
Mr. Callahan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I, Mr. Bob, I certainly, you know, I share the same sentiments as far as your, your prior work with, with other projects, and absolutely, it's nothing, but you understand we have many, many concerns.
No, I, I understand, I appreciate it.
My, my, my suggestion, also, as always, as we see, we have many, many folks here from the neighborhood that have voiced their concerns, that myself and/or Mr. DeRosa reach out and try to, try to, like, just, you know, come to some sort of understanding with the residents as far as what their concerns are. I mean, it always, it always helps, I mean, to check with the neighborhood before this, so I would certainly urge, Mr. DeRosa.
No, I, I agree with Mr. Callahan, and, you know, Mr. DeRosa's made a long-term investment here. His intention is not to just walk away right now, so we're going to do what we have to do to make this work for everyone.
Thank you. Any other comments from the board members, concerns? That being said, Patrick, what do we have for our next meeting, and do you need one meeting out, sir, or two? One is sufficient?
One, one should be fine.
Okay. So we're all in agreeance, we're just looking for an increased narrative, looking for clarification on the city side in regards to the demolition. You have the permit that you can seek.
And a site plan illustrating the parking?
Yes.
Update elevations. As well as language of a memorandum of understanding related to, to an easement, and then reviewed by the law department. And then certainly, I'd be looking to have any emails or correspondence within DPD and the city as it relates to the demolition, as it relates to the cease and desist order. Like to see those documents as well. Could email those to, to myself and the board members, that would be
Mr. Chairman, could we, could we request a copy of those emails as well?
By all means, the petition will always be
Thank you.
By all means. Any correspondence that's related to the removal, the approval of the demolition, as well as the cease and desist order, so everybody's on the same page as far as the communication, as well as copy the, provide the petition with the same access to the documents. So September 10th is our next meeting, is that
September 10th?
Clear for you?
Yep.
Okay.
The 10th of September, same time.
Same time.
Okay.
Just for the, just as the record, for it to be known that this is a continuance, there'll be no public notice. Public notice is, is made public record now, the next meeting will be continued to September 10th, 2018.
And, and just for the record, there was never a cease and desist order that was issued to Mr. DeRosa, so
Okay.
just wanted to get that in the record.
Okay. We could strike that
Stop voluntarily.
If we could strike that language from the record and my comments
It's okay.
and make it, make it a record, knowing that it was voluntarily set aside by the petitioner, Mr. DeRosa. I want to, public hearing is closed, public hearing is closed, sir, we're not allowed to answer questions from the forum. I do want to thank all the residents tonight that spoke, both in favor and in opposition. As many of you said, it is well within your, your rights and your understanding to come and speak your mind, pro or con, and this is the forum for it, and I thank you for that. With that being said, I'd like to seek a motion for a continuance.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZB, 2018-26, 41 Ellis Avenue, public hearing to be continued to September 10th, 2018.
May I have a second?
I'll second the motion, Mr. Chairman.
We have a roll call, please.
Chairman Perrin.
Continue to September 10th, 2018.
Member Peck.
Approve continuance.
Member McCarthy.
Approve continuance.
Member Callahan.
Approve continuance to September 10th, 2018.
Member Brier.
Approve continuance.
So you've been approved for continuance. We look forward to our next hearing. Thank you very much for your time and patience. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and other board members. Thank you very much.
Moving forward on to other business, we have minutes for approval from August 13th, 2018. May I have a motion to accept?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes for August 13th, 2018.
May I have a second?
Second motion.
May I have a roll call?
Chairman Perrin.
We just hold the, hold the roll call vote for one minute. If we could, excuse me, if we could move to the hallway for open conversation, please, it'd be greatly appreciated. Thank you. Have a good night. Thank you for coming in. So other, under other business, we have a motion on the floor to accept the minutes of 13th, 2018. We have a second, we have a roll call.
Chairman Perrin.
Accept the meetings.
Member Peck.
Approve the minutes.
Member Callahan.
Approve the minutes.
Member McCarthy.
Approve the minutes.
Member Brier.
Approval.
Minutes have been accepted. At this point, there's no other business on the agenda. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
May I have a second?
Second motion.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, have a good night.